Today, we thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed on us, especially the blessing of living here on the Mississippi Gulf Coast. We ask you to bless our leaders. Bless them as they gather to deliberate about our future. We ask you to bless them with wisdom, bless them with courage, and bless them with peace. In your holy name, we pray, amen.
Mr. Tim Holland, the leaders in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning to everyone. I want to get some very important business out of the way first, and that is I want to recognize our supervisor, Mr. Franklin Martin, who had a birthday on the... He's at the board stuff, by the way. Happy birthday.
Twenty-nine.
Yeah.
Right. We would, sheriff said they would leave it this summer, but it's filled with little sort this morning, so I'm gonna let him make it.
Just buy a gift.
Just save money.
We do have a couple of attendments to the gym. I'd like to get those out of the way, please. First thing is, we're gonna add this if an order proven submission of applications of 2022 emergency road and bridge fund program from VR 2430, social Atlanta Road over the Flex River, VR 24123, land the road over Taylor Creek branch, get a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All the favors, the motion say aye. All opposed, motion carried. Also, we're gonna take off the agenda, item forty-six. Does not need to be board approval. Motion for that.
Motion.
In the first discussion, all the favors, that motion say aye. All opposed, motion carried. And also, item forty-eight, we'll take that off the table per Mr. Mayor's request, get a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All the favors, the motion say aye. All opposed, okay, motion carries. Next, we want to do, the sheriff has prior engagement, so we're gonna ask, I'm gonna ask the board, we're gonna move the sheriff up before he has to get out, but we'll ask.
Good morning. Total this morning, we had seven sixty-one, thirty-nine misdemeanors, hundred-and-twenty-four females, eighty-nine that have cleared state arrest, and forty-two federal arrests.
I'm trying to think of any, I'm trying to get down to your sheriffs, is there anything we need to do?
Thirty-one.
Number thirty-one. Thirty-one, thirty-two, okay.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. Let me get to it here. Two... Okay, next, we do item thirty-three, by the sheriff, says order authorizing payment in amount of four thousand three hundred and four dollars and forty-three cents to the public employee retirement system of Mississippi on employees. Kevin Hicks' contribution, it stated on his USERA cost gap for the purchase of service credited during a period of absence, military leave, motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
That's our portion of his retirement.
That's his portion, and that's your portion, but plus, he's paying his portion also.
That's what I mean, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, in the first discussion, all the favors, the motion say aye. All opposed, the motion carries. Item thirty-four, declaring unit number eleven-hundred, asset number two-one-zero-nine-eight-two-zero-one-one, I'm sorry, two-zero, yeah, one-one, four F-one-fifty, as surplus authorizing account to donate same to Stone County MA, and authorizing inventory control clerk to remove same from inventory.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All the favors, say aye. All opposed, motion carried. Item thirty-five, order for now that Communication International is the lowest and best reverse auction bid received on April the eighth, twenty-twenty-two, for police outfit packages for the twenty sheriff's officers' tojos in amount of two-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-five-thirty-five-five, and accepted Communication International lowest than the bid price offered made on April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, in a total amount of two-hundred-and-thirteen-zero-seven-eight-twenty, to be paid from zero-zero-one-two-hundred-nine-two-two, and authorizing the following line item transfers, motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, did you get the twenty, or did you end up with nineteen?
No, we got, we got the twenty.
Yeah. Yeah, in part of the discussion, all the favors, say aye. All opposed. Item thirty-six, order authorizing sheriff's office cell, one Glock, model twenty-two, serial number YUY four-seven-five, asset number twenty-three-six-seven-seven, to retire Lieutenant Kevin Hicks, wait fee of one dollar, as allowed by Mississippi Code Section forty-five-nine-one-thirty-one.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All the favors, the motion say aye.
Aye.
Sheriff, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
We did tell you that the first one to leave the meeting has to be the first one to bring the biscuit next week.
I've asked for biscuits for a year and a half.
Okay. That's right. All right, getting back to the topic, we're getting ready to get started. Okay, first, I want to recognize this caller, Reyes, right, Reyes?
Reyes.
Reyes, with Casa de Cabanas and her attorney, Allen Chase, Chase, Chase and Associates, P L L C, to discuss vending on the beach and house account. Come on up, you'll state your name, where the, where the address, please, where the...
I'm Allen Chase, my office address is one-zero-three-four-five, Deckerville Boulevard in Deckerville, zip code three-nine-five-four-zero. This is Mrs. Carla Reyes.
Yes, I'm Carla Reyes, my address is sixty-eight ninety-six, FedEx Evans Rose, Ocean Springs, Mississippi, three-nine-five-three-one.
Okay. We appreciate this opportunity, Mr. President, to present to you our matter of concern of vending on the beach. I'm going to allow Ms. Reyes to kind of briefly describe what service she's providing. First of all, she has attempted to get a special permit to allow her service on the beach. It's not a actual rental where people can come up on the beach on the spot and pay for the service, it requires prior reservations. She will explain how she does that, and then I will go to some other matters.
Okay.
Well, yes, I own Casas de Gavanyas, we are a luxurious picnic company here on the coast that basically sets up for clients in their given and wanted location. We typically do that on beaches, public parks, private residence. We do weddings, proposals, birthday parties, just everything that you can think of. And so, our opposing side now is that we're being considered a vendor because we do utilize the beach as a part of our setup for clients who do want the beach, and we strongly disagree with this because we require twenty-four to forty-eight hour notice prior to setup. We do not accept payment on the beach, and then we do also offer setups in other locations as well.
Okay, I have several pictures that I would like to present. Sure. Yes.
I'm just gonna make a copy of each of the board members.
Thank you.
The first photo on the top is actually a photo from a concert called Coastal Picnic.
I was just gonna say, this is not from the...
This what?
This is a different company.
But the same idea.
Right. Then, the next photo you see would be a picture of something that Ms. Reyes provides with the bed setup, with the cabana, with the, next to that, to the far right, you can see there's another setup, but that's not something that hers, but just to show that it gives up a similar structure. And then, the next picture is again, a picture of her setup. Now, as I understand it, that she had attempted to give special permit, to do a special event, she was told that she did not need a permit for that purpose if there was less than twenty-five feet. And since we've discovered that, the Sand Beach Authority has taken this to be a business where she is required to register as a vendor and to bid on a particular location to set up her service. Now, we kind of take exception to that because we don't know that she's being treated the same as these other companies. If they have places where a person can relax, like lying in a lounge chair, or beach chair, or lying on the bed, have covered, tucked in front of the sun, such as umbrella or the cabana, even though they are similar in concept, it is not a rental. And if we look at the definition that is defined as bid packages, it lists a vendor, someone renting beach equipment. Now, whether or not this is considered beach equipment, maybe that's up for debate, but I think the main distinction in this case is that what she provides is a service that gives a person a beach experience. She sets up a picnic at a location that a client would select, they pay her off-site, she doesn't collect money, is there, she doesn't keep her cabanas out on the beach for any person to come in and pay and say, "I want to use this for two hours," or whatever, for right now. That's not how she is set up. And so, our point is that if there are other people or businesses that's allowed to do something very similar, and they're able to get a permit, then she should also be able to get the permit and not be treated as a vendor. I understand that a vendor has to wait a four-year cycle, he bid, and he goes to the highest bidder.
Chuck.
Chuck, if you had a chance to talk to them and look into this, can you tell us what you are?
I can come up, and I can...
Sure.
Just come to the... As you know, like Mr. Chase said, we have beach vendors, they work on a four-year cycle. We have motorized spots, we have non-motorized spots, and we have retail spots that go out for bid on a four-year cycle. The non-motorized is a chairs and umbrella aqua cycles that we have out on the beach. We have vendors that come to us that has, like, that want to do picnics on the beach, set up for weddings, they come in, get a special event permit for twenty-five dollars, and they have the event last hour, two hours at most, and then they're gone.
Now, do you know, do they tell you in advance where the location is?
Yes, they did.
Okay, so you know if it's gonna work, or if it's not gonna be next to somebody else's?
Right, next to five, five head, or something to that nature. When I talked with Carla originally, when she said she wanted to do picnics on the beach, I assumed it was a picnic like you have for a few people, a group of people, that's fine. We do a special event for it, it's twenty-five dollars, and no issue. The issue that we had with her business is they set up a queen-sized bed with a canopy on top, four to six of them on the beach at different locations. We have vendors that pay multiple thousands of dollars to do business on the beach, and here, somebody setting up, wanting to do this, what I suspect is a vendor, because we have chairs and umbrellas, it's the same physical thing that she's doing, and, you know, either she can wait till the time when we have the bids come up available again, and we still have, this is the third year, we still have one more year on the cycle, or get with a vendor that's already there, and possibly work something with one of them, say, "Listen, I think I could add to your business if you allow me to do it," so they could, she could put her, her business in one of those locations. But that's totally up to y'all, whatever y'all see fit, but if we allow something like this, we have ten more people right behind it wanting to do the same thing.
So, I kind of, I kind of see this similar as a chair and umbrella vendor, but the chairs are bed, and the umbrellas are canopy. But the difference, the big difference here is that you don't have a dedicated spot.
Location.
Yeah, location.
And may I ask, the company Coastal Picnic and Co., they also offer chairs and umbrella, tables and pillows, as well as throw blankets for a day.
They do, but they, the difference, ma'am, is they get their permit, and Chuck approves where they're gonna go.
And so, that was my next question. I had reached out to you prior to setting up, and you had told me that I didn't need a permit if it was under twenty-five guests.
Correct, when it was just a picnic, not a queen-sized bed with a canopy on top, that's something totally different.
May I ask a question? So, they call you and ask you for an event, to plan your event for them?
Yes, ma'am.
Every time? You don't just go and randomly and put the beds out?
Uh, no, ma'am, correct. We get phone calls, or we have reservations put on, on our website, and so they would reserve, they would reserve a time slot, and then we would discuss where they want their actual setup.
And what kind of an event? Do you ask what kind of event? Do you go down to the sand beach and get a permit for every single one of those, those events?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Like, if you have six of them, and they're in six different locations, do you get six different permits for that particular event?
I think that's what she had planned to do, but I guess one thing determined that it was not permitted, and that she could not set it up without being a...
When we saw what it was gonna be put out on the beach, it was just more than what we anticipated.
Bottom line is, there's exchange of money, she's making money to use the beach.
Correct.
If I go throw a party for my family, I go down there for two or three hours, I have a party or picnic, and then I leave, but I'm not, I'm not making money.
Correct.
And, and they would be using a county facility, a county, in effect, county facility to, to, vendor, to make money.
Correct. And then, we have, we have vendors, like I said, that, and they, you know, we're talking forty, fifty thousand dollars for a four-year period, that they, they paying for this. I mean, and then, over the weekend, I had, you know, numerous calls, that there wasn't one setup, there was four to six of these set up in one location on the beach. I had phone calls from property owners across the street saying they don't want it across from their residence.
You talking about this type of activity?
Yes, ma'am.
That's been used in the beach for?
Yeah, across the street from their residence, yeah.
Let's be clear now, she wasn't on your beach on this weekend.
No, not this, on a weekend, not this weekend, necessarily, not on this weekend, previous weekends before, when she was set up. I've had calls, and then I've had calls from beach vendors, saying, "What is going on? Why can't we do this also? Why do we have to bid on a spot if we can set up a chair and umbrella?"
Chuck, I have a question. How do you treat Coastal Picnic so far? Because it shows they've already done this, how are they treating it?
They come in and get a permit for twenty-five dollars for a special event.
And so, we need to just do the same?
Go ahead.
I mean, in my opinion, how is it any different? If we tell her no, then we need to tell Coastal no.
Well, what they doing, and what Carla's doing, is a totally, I mean, she said no ticket, but it's, like I said, it's a huge bed with a canopy, and people are lounging.
For how long?
Oh, we do four-hour sessions.
So, this party, four hours, isn't, aren't these parties with the large tables and the lights, and for Coastal Picnic, about four hours?
Yes, sometimes they're two, four hours, yes, ma'am.
And we think also that high tides, Mississippi also does the same thing, what I'm saying, they're gonna get a special bid, be set up. Again, I don't see the difference if they're providing a place for people to relax, sit down, and find, they provide cover from the sun, if they're doing the same thing, and she's doing the same thing, it's just that her structure may be different, but it's not really larger. The beds only measure six feet by eight feet, I believe, the poster...
If I may, I think one thing that we need to look at is requiring any retail business that wants to do something on that beach to get a permit, regardless of what people, because then you can control where the location can be, so that it's not across the street from some residence's house, you see what I'm saying? Because there's something called, help me out here, Tim.
Impairing rights.
Impairing rights.
So, they have somewhat of a say-so what goes across. The vendors that we have now are located where there's parking bays, where people can fit in and out, in commercial areas, as well as these picnics. They'll usually go near the restrooms on the beach, or something like that.
Or a bonfire.
Or the bonfires.
They have a bonfire, just hanging there.
But maybe you ought to look into just changing that period, that if, if somebody's making money and selling anything that's on that beach, they need to get a permit.
We're crossing them out.
Per site.
And, and can I comment on it?
Sure.
They ought to all be treated the same, however we're gonna do it, you have to come up with how they're gonna be treated. I don't see a huge difference between the two. Because y'all have to understand, that is a public beach open to the public. When you go down and set up on the beach, you're gonna exclude the public from the area that you are doing it for whatever period of time, right? Because then, all strangers walking up and laying down their bed. So, the permit process, or the vendor permit, vendor is a, basically, a rental contract between the county and the vendor to use that spot, to some extent, not to the exclusion of the public, but you have the ability to do it. Without that, you don't have the right to do that, you don't have the right to stop somebody from walking up and sitting down on your bed, because it's a public beach, and the board is charged and regulating the beach to keep it open for public use. Well, you, I've seen this service, it's very nice, but it has to follow the rules, and so, you know, we have vendors that, I don't see your operation any different than a vendor, except that it moves. The vendors are in one spot. I don't see any difference in why you say we pay it, we don't take money on the beach, I don't, some of them may or may not do that, I don't know. But, it's no different than that, you're taking up a spot on the beach to the exclusion of the public, and those people that are doing it are basically renting that spot from the county during a period of time, and the county cannot lease county property without fair market value being obtained, which is where the vendor process came from. And, and so, I don't see a difference between vendors and that, except that this is a new situation. Previously, the board was looking at these set spots, so now we have a business that's gonna be moving, the vendor process could be modified, or if the board, if the board wants it to be done by permits, it can be done by permit, but both of those were... In about thirty years that I've been with the county, the county has never allowed portable or mobile vending on the beach whatsoever, in, in the thirty years, so this is... It's new. It's very new, that's why, you know, under the assumption that she is a vendor also, so that's why it would come up for bid on the four-year cycle.
Well, may I suggest this, because it sounds like we agree that perhaps she's a vendor, perhaps we also agree that the other similar companies are vendors as well, if they're getting special permits, then she should be allowed to get a special permit until perhaps the board makes a change in ordinance, or whatever needs to be done to allow it to happen.
The only problem with that, Allen, I'm just listening, I don't know, since the event lasts four hours, you're putting four, I hadn't seen it, I'm just going by what y'all said. Putting four poster beds in a certain area for four hours, and I assume that requires some setup beforehand, and take downtown after, so how long would, if I decided I don't want four beds on the beach in front of, for a party or something, I'm not sure what kind of party you're gonna do on the beach in a bed, but...
Hit some sign.
But, how long are we talking about in one setting?
What you set it up?
Yeah, for the time you get on the beach with it, to the time it's off the beach. What are we talking about?
Yes, sir, what takes about two and a half hours to set up, and two and a half hours to break down?
It's a five-hour plus four, you're talking about, basically nine hours of event, that you're using, that's a vendor, that's not a permit.
Another consideration is how often. How often is it daily?
Uh, no, sir.
Or potentially, it could be daily?
Yes, it could be.
You're talking, in effect, it's a daily activity, it could be, or potentially, a daily or every other day activity on the beach.
She has a limited number of cabanas at this point, and of course, is available for the locations.
Maybe we need to look at the whole permitting process, and who we permit, who we're permitting on the beach, and if there's any funds being exchanged, someone going on that beach and making money, maybe we need to review that, not allow that. The vendors are paying thousands of dollars down there to discounting for that, so maybe we need to review the permitting process.
On the picnics that people come in and get special events, I would say in a month time, we talking maybe, at the most, four, three to four.
But there's no money exchanged, Chuck, any, what I'm saying is...
They pay us a fee, they pay us a fee for a special event for twenty-five dollars.
But they're not, but they're not making any, the people that are permitting...
The people who are doing the activity are, are charging people to come on that beach, well, then, we need to review our permitting process. There's people making money using that facility.
What they're charging for, like this setup chairs.
Look at the beach, just like, as if it were a building or facility, and if we're permitting people to make money, we need to seriously look at that, and if we're allowing somebody to do the same thing she wants to do, we need to stop that.
They're doing the same amount as the bid.
It, it's the same thing.
It is.
The point is that we have business people, she's a business person, making money using our facility, and anybody that is charging to use that, same way with a civic center, if they charge going to civic center, we charge more for them.
But, but...
But we need to really review the permitting process, because that's what comes, you're absolutely right, if we're allowing somebody else to do something similar, but not the same, then, then it make, you know, that's not right.
Supervisor, I can answer.
But we do want to make sure that we have unique amenities to offer visitors that comes, and this is very unique, I've experienced them, and, but I think at this time, if we could let the attorneys and Chuck and you all kind of come together and work out something, whether it's reviewing the vendors, or how we do it, or how my, I see the, I see the problem, it's like having trucks, food trucks in front of a restaurant, we kind of, it's the same, I mean, similar, similar issue, where they don't have the overhead that a restaurant has, and that sort of thing. But if we could just kind of come together at this point, I don't think we're gonna solve it today.
I think, I think we have to make a decision on whether we want to cease it all, of getting too great a permit to operate until we come up with a solution. That's the problem, is the question.
I'd like to say something. If you choose locations, so they're not in front of homes, I think that's important, Chuck, when you make this decision, let's pick certain locations that we only allow it. I don't think it's fair to cut them off now, this is how she perhaps earns her living, so I think we should give them that time, a month, or whatever you think is appropriate.
Temporary.
I can tell you, I got married twenty-five years ago, and we paid someone across from St. Thomas in Long Beach, she set up a beautiful table, chandeliers hanging, and we did pay her, so it is a quality of life for citizens who do pay a whole lot of property taxes, so that's my opinion.
But in the meantime, can we go ahead and let her apply?
Department?
Yeah, until we get to a comfortable solution.
If it's fifty dollars instead of twenty-five...
That's really charging, you're charging other people.
But, but... Twenty-five.
But that way, you'll know where the location is, and you can figure out if...
Consistency.
Just to avoid conflict, they cannot do it where another vendor already has a right.
That's why I'm saying...
Chuck can make that decision.
But you know where the vendors' areas are.
Yes, ma'am.
You also know where the residents are.
Correct.
Maybe have a map printed up.
I would entertain that.
I agree, it's moving targets now, because it's something new, we gotta kind of figure it out. Then, the process of figuring it out, you know, I would suggest, my personal thing, give them a temporary use until...
For each...
For each event, for each order.
Just like, just like this...
It's like what they do, right?
Sure.
Do you need a motion to that factor?
Yeah, I think, you know, he can make a motion if he wants, not really taking action at this point, just...
Temporary for the next, what, thirty days?
Well, how long would Tim think it'd take to get a...
It shouldn't take long, I mean, Chuck needs to make recommendations, because he knows what's going on, how he wants to do it, then we make a suggestion.
I want to make sure that it's consistent, everybody's pretty much saying.
How much time do you think you need, Chuck?
Thirty days is fine.
Thirty days, okay, so we're, next, first meeting in June, okay?
He can shoot it to me, we can talk about it.
So, in the meantime, ma'am, you just say, when you sell one of your beds, go to him, he's permitted, by the, so no matter how many people he has, get the permit, so he can double-check the location.
But they understand this is temporarily, and we don't know what is going, what the outcome's gonna be until he come up with the...
outcomes are going to be until he come up with the resolution of chucking out the board attorney.
Yes, sir.
But this way you won't be happy.
Make sure your plans are clean up of each of the areas.
Oh, yes, we actually clean up.
Insurance was my.
Yes, yes, ma'am, my husband.
Be sure you do because.
I gave him a coffee.
We have a coffee in there. Okay, thank you.
And thank you. Thank you.
Small business.
That's right. Absolutely.
Yes, sir. No, no, we just we just gave you the decision temporarily.
I need a second.
We need to go on, okay.
Oh, I'll make that.
She make the motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Chuck, we need to charge you a question about the money.
And so we have, I want to recognize Mr. Brian Lamar with the Naval Construction Battalion Center to give an update on the Navy base.
Well. Hi, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm not Ryan Lamar, I'm Captain Jeff Powell. I'm the CEO of the base. But I do what so with me is Brian Lamar, who's the Public Affairs Officer. And Mr. Ron Jenkins, who is the Community Plans and Liaison Officer, the CIPLO. You'll hear that term. It's a fancy name that probably for fifteen or twenty years in the Navy and the Marine Corps had CIPLOS. And these are kind of outward facing, you know, our our face of the community. He'll come to these kind of meetings, he'll be involved in planning and encroachment and those kind of things. Can I give you my name and address?
I got it.
My address is the big base over there. So, yes, but Captain Jeff Powell, J E F F P O W V L L. So folks, I've been here about two years, a year and a half. I have about a year, another year and a half to go. I have twenty seven years in the Navy. This is my third time being stationed in Gulfport. And so my family, I really enjoy this, and I have a high school junior, goes to St. Patrick, and I have a daughter at Auburn University. And so it's had, great to be with you. I'm really happy to be here after COVID. I think the first year and a half or so that I was here, I didn't do anything. In fact, I wasn't, we never went out to eat, we never, the Navy didn't let me do anything. So I'll talk briefly about that and then certainly I'll time the end for questions. I don't I don't have a whole lot for you today. The base is largely back to normal. I'm warning everybody else here too. I'm sorry, I feel a little bit odd talking talking forward. So the base is largely back to normal. We currently have zero COVID cases on this base and probably for the last month or two, we've had zero. At our peak, we had one hundred and sixty five cases. So we have roughly five to six thousand people on the base. We have three or four thousand sailors, you know, active duty. We have a thousand or so civilians that work on the base. We have housing residents, I'll talk about housing a little bit, contractors and and folks like that. So at one point, we had one hundred and fifty, one hundred and sixty five, kind of the height of the Delta Delta wave. We're currently in what's called Health Protection Condition Alpha, which is we're aware of COVID is there, we have some restrictions, but largely our base is open. And for the last two years, they have done a lot of our inspections, our oversight and things virtually. We haven't got had a lot of visitors on base and and that's largely over now. We're back to normal, we're receiving visitors, we're kind of back to our regular business. Talked about the the base statistics a little bit. So we have five hundred and sixty one houses on the base. They're privatized, Verbaidi is our our partner. A lot of people are surprised for for the size of our base, five hundred and sixty one houses is a lot. There are about twenty percent of the houses are are occupied by civilians or non-affiliated military, which is a little bit of an interesting challenge. I will tell you, the the four or five people I've had to kick off of the base have all been unaffiliated civilians from variety.
So how do you, like, if I want to go rent a house on the base, out on the base?
You have to pass a background check and you could certainly do that and they would set a market rate. So my so the Navy gives me a housing allowance that I then give to my to housing my landlord because I have to live on base. That's just me.
But as a.
But as a civilian, they would set a market rate for what a eighteen hundred square foot house would be with four veterans. So part of this is the the give and take of the privatization process. So then privatization's been good in that we built a whole lot more houses in the Navy than with the Navy could have built. The bad news is they have to be able to make money. And so when there's no service members to go rent those houses, they have to go to outside, they go to what's called a waterfall. Now, some of that is retirees and folks in the Coast Guard and National Guard and Reservists.
They're charging fair market value.
They're charging fair market rent for those.
And taking business away from somebody else.
No, they're not. They're charging fair market value. And and it is it is part of the business agreement, they're allowed, they're allowed to do that. I would much rather put active duty families in there and reservists and things like that, but 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 that's that's where we are.
Y'all might just want them.
We do have some, we do have some, yes. It's not, it's not open. I think Memorial Memorial Day opens, so.
I need to retire.
So I would say over the last couple of years, Hurricanes Zeta and Ida devastated the the base pretty bad, certainly housing. So there's four hundred and seventy seven houses on the base. Essentially, every house got a new roof and new fencing. And there's still some siding going on. And this happened, of course, at a time during COVID and there's supply shortages. And so just getting roofing shingles has been a challenge, right? And and some of you may know that as well. So we are, we are not a hundred percent. The roofs are all are good and hopefully they'll hold for the next couple of seasons. But we still have siding issues and some windows and things like that that we just simply can't get, so they're they're working through that. I would say that they, so I said four seventy seven on base, just for your awareness, we do, there's sixty houses on North County Farm Road, this is part of Harrison County. Those are off base. There's just part of the, you live there?
No.
Oh, okay. Oh, gotcha. So it's right, it's it's right across from the farm, the.
County Farm.
County Farm area, right. The Fairgrounds. And then we have twenty four that are over in Slide Out, for mostly for stentists and Coast Guard personnel that live over there. They're part of the Navy, the Navy portfolio. Couple of big projects we have going on on base. We just finished our galley, our dining facility is built nineteen seventy four, and it just was taken down to the slab and the studs and built back up, and it was eighteen million dollar renovations. That's a good local economic story. We just opened it last Thursday. If any of you have college age, this is not your mother's or father's dining hall. This is like a college, college dining hall. It's pizza ovens and primer carving stations and it's really pretty amazing. And so so we're really happy. We've been operating out of our old gym. Basically, we turned our old gym into a fit into a gallery for the last three years. And so our it's been a been a challenge to keep people fed and happy. And now we're in a brand new facility, so that's been a good news story. The one military construction project, you know, the term Milcon Project is congressionally funded and approved, is a new barracks that we're building for a specific tenant, and that's a eighty three room barracks. That's a nineteen million dollar project. That'll be done this summer. After that, we will have no more Milcon projects on the base. Lots of repair and renovation. There's always money coming in and out, but it's that's that's the last Milcon project. So as far as other economic impact, so that barracks is for a a schoolhouse that's called the Expeditionary Combat Skills. So for every person who's going to go to an expeditionary unit, they come to Gulfport for four weeks. And some of them will stay on base now, but a lot of them right now, for the last ten years, have been off base. So that's a lot of hotel, that's a lot of they're on per diem, that's a lot of that's a lot of economic impact. They're here for a month and they get a lot of good training, but they spend a lot of money while they're here too. So that's going to continue. They've 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 been around since twenty ten and I don't I don't see any inside. So that's about three thousand T A D, you know, transient personnel a a year that come through. We also are, we have other schoolhouses on base. So after your boot camp, if you're an enlisted C V, learning how to be a builder or a steel worker or the Army or Air Force equivalent, you come to Gulfport for six to eight weeks of what we call A school, A I T, if you're in Army, if you know some of those other terms. So those folks are also here and they're transient. They don't get off base a whole lot, mostly because of COVID, but also just because it's a little bit of an extension of the training pipeline. But they are here and they do, they do spend some money in the economy, but but that's a, we probably have five or six thousand students that come through every year just for that, that training. So the federal minimum wage order, so President Biden, I think, N D A was recent, raised our minimum wage to fifteen dollars an hour on the base. So we had a lot of house cleaning operations and and retail operations and those kind of things that people were making seven or eleven dollars an hour and then just like that, they're making fifteen dollars an hour. It's a big bill for the Navy, frankly, but it's good for our folks and it's good for folks to live and live and work here and it's a it's a little bit better better wage for them. That's something we've had to adjust to. You've probably seen this in other businesses. We still have vacancies and it's kind of amazing because we're having trouble finding finding folks to work. So we have, I'm not, this is not an habit, I mean, you need to go have a job. Great, come work on base. We have all kinds of fun things to do over there for our civilians. On February the eleventh, our base fitness center was rebuilt after Katrina and it's really probably the hallmark of our base. We renamed that fitness center the Raymond J. Border Fitness Center, and Chief Border was killed in Afghanistan in twenty eleven. And I won't go into the details, but renaming a facility for somebody is a two year process that goes all the way. And that's a letter from me to the Chief of Naval Operations. Took two years, a lot of advocacy, a lot of politicking to get there, but we got it renamed. We had a wonderful ceremony. His his mom and dad were here, his children were here, and there wasn't a lot of dry eyes in the in the house, but but we renamed. He also, he loved to work out, it was just a perfect thing. And nothing on the base had been renamed in probably fifty years. And so certainly the last twenty five years, the C Vs have been very involved in Afghanistan, Iraq, and so to name a facility that was meaningful and is used by every single troop on base for somebody who died in the line of duty in Afghanistan was really special. And so we really appreciate that. And I think there's more naming, naming events coming, so we kind of open up the floodgates a little bit. The base just got a new mass notification system. So again, the the towers that you may hear if you're around, you may hear colors and you may hear, you know, the national anthem every morning, you may hear announcements for if we have a, you know, a drill or a hurricane or there's a tornado coming. That system was severely out of date since nineteen seventy four and we got that updated. And so that's a, that's a good news for safety and for, I'm not sure the neighbors right around here appreciate that so much, but we're still experimenting with this system. But we're able to localize it. I mean, we all know they had the Canal Road and Twenty Eighth Street issue last weekend. We were able to kind of isolate and help control traffic around around the base. So we're more excited about that. In the last two years since, probably since we've been out, we we have a great partnership with Mississippi Power. The base was called the microgrid system. And so if a hurricane or some natural disaster, we lose power, we can power the the mission essential parts of the base now through a great partnership that we have with Mississippi Power and it's diesel generators that can, that can, again, I think we can do three megawatts of power. The base load is about seven megawatts. So we can't do housing, but we can basically do everything else that we need to.
And how do you sell it?
The solar farm, yes. The solar farm, right, I mean, like right now, today feeds out in the grid. It is not, does not help the base right now, today. But in the event of an emergency, we will take some of that power and help power this microgrid. So it's a, it's a, it's a usage and cost sharing arrangement that, but yeah, right now it is helping the Mississippi Power grid, our land. So we're, I mean, that's a.
Now, they're paying for that, right?
They are, yes. And and part of that, the in kind consideration was to begin this microgrid generator system for us. Yeah, it's a good, it's a good deal. And the one thing, the, again, a new requirement from Congress is every base does what's called a black start exercise, which is basically turn off the switch, take the base off of power and then see how things come back up using our microgrid. We were the first base in the Navy to do that, so we're very proud of that. So I hope we don't ever ever have to do that, but if we do, we we learned a lot of lessons out of that and how to, because we do lose power down here because we all know. And the last thing I have for you is this, this, twenty twenty two is the eightieth anniversary of the C Vs. So March fifth, nineteen forty two, the C Vs were formed, obviously for World War Two. It's also the eightieth anniversary of the base. So the base was originally called Camp Paliday, the original Broad Street Gate, was kind of the original gate, and then it was called the Advanced Base Storage Depot Gulfport, something like that, it rolls off the tongue. And then in nineteen sixty six or so, it was called Naval Construction and Times Center Gulfport, which is what it's called now. But so off and on, you know, in various stats, it's been an eighty years. We've been part of this community and we're really excited to to be here. And so we have a lot of events, a lot of, a lot of public affairs events and a lot of things we're doing to celebrate that. The C V just had a C V ball for the first time in several years to celebrate their eightieth anniversary. And then we just had, was the last weekend, we had C V day, which was, as I told my fellow Navy base COs, it's like air shows with bulldozers. So but we had that and we had several thousand, we had three or four thousand people at that event.
See, the locals, we always refer to it as a C V base.
C V base, that's exactly right. Yeah, I I hear that a lot, so. Did I miss anything? Okay. Again, I'm honored. Thanks for allowing me to provide a brief updating, glad I can come out and do do things like this. We're very proud of the base, we're proud of our community partners. Like I said, this is my third time being down here on the Gulf Coast and we love it every time and it was, it's a, it's coming home for us out of my my twenty seven years. I've done the third event here in Gulfport, so. So do you have any questions?
We appreciate you. I would like to come speak with you about the new, I forgot the name of it, I mean, what do you call it, the firing range that you have across the street.
That Wool Market.
In District Five in Wool Market. We'll talk about that one day.
Okay. Okay, after you do that.
How how it's coming along and how it's going to impact all the neighbors.
So I don't know that we're doing any changes to that right now. I mean, we're sort of just doing maintenance and we we de-lead the berms every once in a while, but there's a pretty steady stream of folks that are shooting out there, but I don't know that we have any capital improvement projects that are that are planned.
There's more people moving out there.
There are more people moving out there, yeah.
Now, you're going to have a neighborhood right next to you.
Yeah.
That's what's changing.
Well, they do, they'll be aware that there's all, it's like saying the planes are too loud, the airport was there first with all due respect.
Yeah, I think.
You know?
I'm looking at my community plans and liaison. So, yeah, so that's a great example. Yeah, first and jobs. That's a great example of of, some of you may know Ron from his other, he's been on, he's been the XO of the base. He's working in public works now for for a while and he was also a part of the Harrison County planning outfit for a while. But that's, encroachment is a great, that's a, that's a, that's a key focus area for him is is working the encroachment. Sensitive to where we live, but we, you know, we obviously have a mission to do.
And I think we had a public private partnership to try and help with buffers and berms and things like that.
Okay, yeah, but lots of lots of options.
Okay. Thank you. Very nice meeting you. Thank you for coming.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thanks a lot. Have a good day.
Next we have our consent agenda items. Number three, three eleven, happening place on the consent agenda, same appearing to be routine, non-controversial matters of which all supervisors are liable to agree.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All the favors say aye. Oppose. Item twelve order spreading twenty minutes and personnel changes in tax accessories office as listed on file with payroll clerk. Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All the favors say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Order approving encounter travel reimbursement by tax accessories office as listed.
Motion.
And second?
Second.
Discussion. All the favors, motion say aye. Oppose. Motion carries item fourteen. Order approving travel hotel and registration fee for Terry Door. Colin Martin, Monica Peeg, and Stephanie Brenell to take the M A E Mississippi assessment value. Example on June second through third, twenty twenty-two in Relling, Mississippi. Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All the favors say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item fifteen order adjudicated travel hotel registration fees for John Carter, who attended the first week of certified appraisers who made sec, made second through sixth in twenty twenty-two. Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, what appraiser?
Tax assessor.
Tax assessor.
Of the tax assessor, not the.
Assistant.
Yeah, the legal assistant.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All the favors, the motion say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item sixteen order approving travel and hotel, no, just did it. Item seventeen. That's a different one?
Different one.
Okay. I got you. Order approving travel and hotel for John Carter, Carter to attend the second week of the certified appraisers school made sixteenth through twenty of twenty twenty-two in South Bend, Mississippi.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All the favors, the motion say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item seventeen order acknowledged receipt of and approving petitions for decreases to the twenty twenty-one real property role as recommended by the tax successor.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All the favors, the motions say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Eighteen order spreading upon minutes, person that changes for the tax collector's office as listed on file with the payroll administrator in human resource department.
Second.
Discussion. All the favors, the motion say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Nineteen order proven mileage reimbursement for just as quark employees as listed.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All the favors say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item twenty. Order awarding bid for a metal roof replacement at the Harrison County Lorraine Road Work Center Building. Projected project to Guff South Roofing LLC for the base bid amount of one eighty-five, two sixty-five, based on the lowest and best bid total and authorizing the board president to execute the contract documents at the legal review.
Motion.
Discussion. All the favors, the motions say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item twenty-one order approving the local purchase of generators for control electric in amount of thirty-nine thousand, four hundred fifty-four dollars for five services and for Millicoe in amount of twenty thousand, eight hundred forty-eight for the road department and authorizing a budget amendment to increase line items by an amount shown. Motion.
Motion. Second. Tim, is this, does this include a maintenance contract or is that something?
Yeah, this is, this is just an equipment replacement.
Well, how come we don't have a maintenance contract to go with it?
Now, if it's just, if it's just oil and the everyday, you know, radiator fluids and stuff like that, Armicure can do that. Now, if it comes into something with the, the wind and the generator itself, it would have to be maintenance by a professional.
But that's not included, isn't it, or do you know?
This is, um, we've been, we've been going through all of the generators and kind of what PMs are needing. And each of the departments have offered, this is the stuff that we have people that can do it. Like, like Tim was saying with oil changes, checking belts and so, so forth. The situations that go beyond that, what we're going to be doing is just providing, here's the, here's the local vendors that can do that work and get individual quotes. And what we've been seeing is that typically those are relatively low costs when it goes above and beyond. And some of these, kind of like fixing a truck, you know, you can fix your oil, you can change transmission fluid and everything. And if you have something big happen, you get some quotes and get it done. So we're, we're trying to treat them sort of like trucks.
And the, and the new GPS units have the capability of keeping all that maintenance information.
Schedule.
Schedule as far as the oil, changing the oil and, and the.
Show how many locks, everything that generators put out, so there's any issues.
Let me ask you a question. Is there a difference in the generator for the fire services and the one for the road department?
The fuel for them. One is on.
I'm sorry?
The fuel for them. They're on diesel and natural gas and they're different.
Okay, that's why we got to do different quotes?
We, we offer, yes, there, there are two different quotes for the two different fuel sources. And then we had a four or five different vendors quote on each of them, and then this is how they came in lowest.
Okay. I'll make sure I. Yeah, because you got two different.
They're, they're actually, the fire services has two, so they're each approximately twenty. Got two.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All the favors, the motions say aye. Oppose. Motion carries item twenty-two. Order approving renewal of the public safety radio system access agreement for Keatsla Airport space as recommended by the Harrison County Emergency Communications Commission at its meeting on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All the favors, the motions say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item twenty-three order approving payment to Mississippi Power Company in amount of ten thousand, three hundred and sixty-four thousand, sixty-four cents. Envoys number six to one twenty-one per sublease agreement for yearly radio tower rental for the period of March first, twenty twenty-two through February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All the favors, the motions say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item twenty-four order accepting grant in amount of thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty from the Mississippi Department of Homeland Security for new radios for supply services and authorizing the board president to sign the same.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item twenty-five, consider proven projects requested by Jillik Michael Dickerson for vegetation centers located at Maple's Drive as listed for some assistance from the county departments for quotes and construction depending upon the project. Depending upon the project.
Motion.
Second, discussion.
Discussion.
Any assistance that the county departments give, they need, we need to be paid back by that grant, correct?
The road department.
I don't know if it'd come out of the grant.
Road.
Could come out of their budget.
Well, it needs to come out of their budget.
Could reimburse that some.
The reimbursement, yeah.
Well, the only thing I know that they reimburse is when the road, any work the road department does.
Well, I'm out of the board.
Anything that we do.
I mean, you could require, have to take it out of the, if you've got the budget or the board, can it authorize him to, authorize the board to provide that assistance to, to them? It, it can do it either way. I don't know if it'd come out of the budget, I don't know if it qualifies for the.
Okay, well, they can't come out of the grant, it needs to come out of their budget. They have, I mean, we can talk about reasons why, but I'd rather not go there.
I think all they're doing at this point is asking to say, oh, these are projects we'll do, they're not even giving you how much it costs.
What, Valerie?
No, it's just like the county match and what we brought into the grant, a lot of the materials in these projects are covered in the county match part of that grant.
That's fine if it, it's a grant.
As long as it's.
Match could be used for that, but you don't have a balance or anything to know what.
Right, the, the request is to see if we can work with, I think that one of the issues was previously getting quotes without coming before the board. So I come before the board to ask if we can move forward to get the quotes, however we need to do that, however PM advises we do that, so we can see how much it's going to cost.
And if he, and she was saying if you use like the facilities and maintenance, if they're, if they're going to be used, and she was saying that that would come across, that would be reimbursed from that match money too. Yes. Their budget would be reimbursed.
Which would be given out as all this.
Y'all, just so you know, my recollection is the county's match was the least to do of the space. That's what I, I recall.
Was what?
There was like four different.
Okay.
Yes, sir, there were like four or five.
There won't be any money bringing out of their budget if that's the county's match, but I mean, you don't know that yet because you don't know how much we're talking about, but.
So who would ever see that?
Well, they're good, I think they're just asking for these projects to be, okay, we'll do this.
And we start the process on getting quotes to see what it possibly.
How much it costs if, if a county department does it versus if they got the road department to do it, and the road department give an estimate. Somehow, no, the road department has to get reimbursed for that. Because if it's match, if it's the match of the county, then the county would, would reimburse the road department, just basically transfer it to them.
So Jennifer, will you be overseeing? Or will somebody? I just want to know who is gonna, we've been fifty before, I'm sorry.
I'm the administrator.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna be. Cover the pound. We're gonna be working together, Miss Morris, the quote, and getting, and having to do whoever she's gonna have to.
And this board will have to approve those. Well, I mean, depending on the amount, the board will have to approve.
Okay.
Okay, good deal.
I do want to.
What's involved, each one of them can do that also.
Yes. Number three on this link is the only one that's unrelated to the, the grants. I wanted to make sure, I don't know if anybody saw that one, but it's requesting office space, one office at the youth court for a parent, parent partner program. So the Office of State Public Defenders and John Hudson, Judge Hudson from AOC, his jurisdiction residence appointed by the Supreme Court. They're partnering together to do a program in three pilot counties, and they chose if Harrison is willing to do that. Harrison, Hancock, and Lake Counties do that. And so it's a parent peer support, basically, that would go through the training as our peer supports went through for our drug court grant and that we newly hired. They would place them in-house if the county is agreeable just for the office space. The payments, salaries, or anything would come through the state public defenders office or through the Supreme Court, so it would not be paying.
Do you have a space?
We do have one office space that we can make that work into. And it wouldn't be a full-time position, it would be one person hopping around, I think, between Hancock and Harrison. So it'd be as needed, they would be with our parents and our child welfare cases and try to guide them through the process.
And in your Balenci building?
Yeah, Balenci, the actual youth court building, yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, appreciate it. Any, any further discussion?
We need to take that separately and vote on it?
Will it?
The only thing, somebody needs to keep up. County was supposed to match, I don't recall how much it was, ten percent or whatever it was. But somebody needs to keep up.
We have a separate budget.
All right, so you got. Somebody's gonna keep up with what's match and what goes over match, is my question.
Right. Yeah, it's a separate, it's a separate budget and whatever comes out of there, we take it out of that budget.
Okay.
Okay, call a question. All the favors, the motions say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item twenty-four order approving out of county travel for Valerie Underwood, youth court administrator to tour two residential treatment facilities for juveniles on May twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh in all branch of Mississippi.
Motion.
Motion, second.
Discussion. All the favors say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Twenty-seven order approving payments of claims listed to be paid from the party count.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All the favors, the motions say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Twenty-eight order concurrent with the county administrator on enforcement as listed on file with payroll clerk.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All the favors say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Twenty-nine order spreading twenty minutes, the personnel changes of the district attorney's office as listed on file with payroll clerk. Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All the favors say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item thirty, order spreading twenty minutes, personnel changes of the sheriff's office as listed on file with the payroll clerk.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All the favors, the motions say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item thirty-one order designating each board supervisor, county administrator, purchase clerk, transfer clerk, and any department head as board representative to receive his, to be open. Five, seven, twenty twenty-two, two P M. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All the favors, the motions say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item thirty-seven, order approving mileage reimbursement for encounter travel for the following employees.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All the favors, the motions say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item thirty-eight. Order correcting the inventory and back items that were previously disposed of that are still in use for attached list. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All the favors, the motions say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Thirty-nine order, authorizing disposal of assets per attached list and authorizing inventory clerk to remove the same.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All the favors say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item four, order authorizing county administrator and controller to seek lease to lease finance calls from three E-one plumber, five, E-one pumper, five trucks that would approve a purchase on three one twenty-one. Motion.
Motion, second.
Discussion.
Yeah, why, what was taking so long?
It's a year.
Ran over.
A year to build it. I think it was the same. Do they, are they, did they let you know they're on their way? They're finished, they're completed.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the question correct.
The year, it took a year to build the.
Five trucks?
They're on their way, they're finished.
I'm being told, we, we've gone back and forth because of the pandemic. We said it was going to be this time, then they said no because of this, and then they said yes. And I'm being told June is the day, is, is the time that they're thinking that it's going to be. They've, they, the trucks are on the line, they're coming off the line, fixing to be put together and do all the things they did. So, yes, ma'am, thinking June is the time. But if I come back in June and said, oops, it, it could happen, but I don't think that's the case. I think they want to get those out and they're right on track. Answer your question.
Sounds good. Thanks, Matt.
Never lose hope. That's the question, that's the answer.
Yeah, all the favors, the motions say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item forty-one, order acknowledged receipt of in March twenty-two, twenty-two. You heard me card and travel card this holiday.
Motion, second.
Discussion. All the favors, the motions say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item forty-two, order authorizing internal funds and repayments per attached schedule.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All the favors say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item forty-three, order acknowledged received of check number ten one eighty-three in amount of six, 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 two fifty-four seventeen from Chancellor Clerk John McAdams representing the excess, excess over the shadow account for twenty twenty-one. Motion.
Motion.
Second. Discussion.
Discussion, yeah, I'm sorry, John, what's this?
Good deal.
This is great, but where, where did it come from? Is it just a regular salary cap?
Yes. This is excess funds after the operation of the office for twenty twenty-one, and it comes back to the general fund.
Okay.
From the fee account.
Fee account, gotcha, okay.
Yay.
The highest level.
Yes, thank you.
You need to add six, six, eight. I'll add some money that's ten cents, that he did. No, I wouldn't take that.
I don't think it was ever that high.
No, the, the reason, uh, legislation in twenty nineteen passed and increased the recording fees and filing fees in Chancery Court. So we went from ten dollars for recorded deed to twenty-five dollars. And obviously, recording of real property has increased because of the building spurt we've had in the last two years.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Use it well, mental health.
I think that.
All right, all the favors, the motions say aye. Oppose. Motion carries, thank you. Item forty-four is order approving payments of the following claims.
Motion.
Discussion. All the favors, the motions say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Order approving resolution of any matters of the regular and special home set exemption rejected by the Department of Revenue for the year twenty twenty-one, first and second district district.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All the favors, the motions say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item forty-six, order. Forty-seven, I'm sorry, skipped over then. Order proving transferring the amount of four hundred eighty-four thousand, one hundred thirty-one dollars from the general fund, zero zero one one five one nine two two to the tort fund per of two-year. Two-year.
Extrary.
What is that? I have no idea.
Extrarial.
Extrarial, that's what.
That's just for you, they're reviewing it. Lacking that amount of money, so you got to buy a statue, I presume, so you got to put it in.
Got to put it in.
It, it just worked there. I went back with them and I'm not agreeing with them, but.
What am I, we?
What, what you mean, Tim?
They, they made us increase it a lot. That, that's not really, when you, when you look at it, it's years since we've had anything major. So what they did is average it over a long period of time, which includes.
What you said, based on our history, we don't need that amount of money.
Well, the last ten years, we're not anywhere near it.
But they're requiring it.
But they require.
They're requiring it. It's actually where it looks like it's long-term. That's why I'm feeling statistics.
That's why the NFO is going up, so.
It's just gonna sit there like.
Can you get the second?
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We can't use it. It's just money sitting there.
Okay. All the favors, the motions say aye.
I took the dollar six hundred and something.
The most.
Just bounce it out.
Item forty-eight, order, oh, we skipped. What, you wanted to skip on the way?
Forty-eight.[1596.34] Forty-eight.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine, order, approving payment of twelve, five, nine, one, six, six, to, after planning and design, invoice number zero, zero, twenty, twenty, one, six, six, eighteen, professional service on project number S T P zero, zero, two, four, zero, 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 five, four, L P A, Act of Liberty Initiative, service period, February twenty-eighth, you will watch third verse, motion.
Motion. Second discussion, so have we not gotten anything reimbursed from, and don't?
We have, yeah, we get, we get it, it's, when we pay, they reimburse it.
Well, it's got an estimated reimbursement estimate.
Okay, good deal. All right, all in favor, the motion say aye. Out of opposed, motion carries. Item fifty, order approving the use of the DeAlbville Pacific Center by the city of DeAlbville to host A A E M C, C M caution on May thirteenth, fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, certain of the items to determine the local government cooperation agreement between the city of DeAlbville and Harrison County.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Out of opposed, motion carries. Fifty-one, order approving the waiver of rental fees for the use of the county farm, road, shelter, and house, and county soil and water conservation district.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Out of opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-two, orders adjudicating the tax sales of August thirty-first, twenty twenty, and August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, for the tax parcel number one, five, one, zero, D, zero, one, zero, zero, three, zero, zero, one, for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty tax revenues and disforwarded ab initio and for related purposes.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Just a little more information, this was a title lease that had been canceled in two thousand nineteen, got sold for taxes, or on this lease, you know. So it does qualify on the substance.
All in, all in favor, the motion say aye. Out of opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-three, for the knowledge you receive of the appraisal prepared by Alan Purvis on tax parcel number zero, six, zero, nine, eight, zero, one, zero, zero, three, zero, 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 adjudicating the appraised value offered to the property owners to acquire a right of way for the improvements to the intersection of Canal and Land and Roads for project number SAP twenty-four, five, nine, except an easement executed by Cynthia Johnson, Rena, Virginia Johnson, Fadella Johnson Harper, Cheryl Crawford, and Jamesy Johnson, and authorizing the payment of the appraised value for the easement. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, the motion say aye. Out of opposed, motion carries. Item forty-four, order adjudicating and authorizing expenditure that listed as necessary to advertise and bring into favorable notice the opportunities, possibilities, and resources of Harrison County, Mississippi, including the county logo being displayed along with links displayed to Harrison County online services in order to provide access to public resource of Harrison County payable from zero, zero, two, one, hundred, five, two, two. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
So the board, if you'll notice the language I have in here to kind of tighten up the advertising campaign by making whoever advertised should put the county website, which clearly contains all the resources of the county.
Okay.
I like that idea.
Good deal. I'll be honest about that.
Yeah, because I don't think.
Yeah, so, I, I would recommend too, somehow another probably should start requesting copies of whatever they do, and keeps and that, and we'd know if they actually did did do the advertisement, so I'm not sure if we could.
Scholarships and stuff.
It's pretty broad, I mean, I, I don't think that.
So I like that idea, we'll keep, steer them to the website, and who, then will they, so if it's someone in District One that's made a request to advertise, then I'll get a copy of the advertisement and send it to.
I provide, I don't know whether you want to spread it on the minutes, or some backup, or just keep them, in case anybody has a question about it one day, it's the main thing, I, I don't know that we've asked for copies of whatever they did.
Usually, yeah, I request.
Right, so, you know, and this, this just tightens up, there's clearly the, the website has all the county resources on it, your advertisement, when you post it out there.
And this takes more work, but a few months ago, someone called and said they had an old picture of our board supervisors, it was not me, it was the former person, and if we just maybe could check what their collateral for they, they put it out.
Oh, they put a picture of the previous board.
Yeah, that's no big deal, it was like, hey girl, you don't look the same, I don't know, I don't remember what it was, I, I texted Beth about it.
Yeah, it was supposed to be the Biloxi C D deal, but they didn't have a picture of anybody on there.
Right. It was actually two county employees who told me, but anyway.
Well, they, I don't know what they saw. Yeah, I need to show it to you.
Yeah, so it may be more work, but we might want to check before things are released in our name.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, the motion say aye. Out of opposed, motion carries. All right, uh, but go around and tell me, have anything?
I do have something, we received a notice of claim of Landon Smith, heir of law, defendant, Fisher, Elmella Parker, on April twenty-eighth, and I would request the board to enter an order denying this claim, so that we can it starts the status of limitations running again, so I recommend we can today, I'd ask the board for a motion to deny the claim of Landon Smith as the heir of law, defendant, Fisher, Elmella Parker received on April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
If it's on turn, recommendation, that's a move.
Second.
Okay, any?
What would I ask?
Yeah, well, I've, I've asked a question to it.
Uh, they put an amount on it.
But I mean, what are they saying?
It's, they, they don't, the, the claim basically says they don't know who shot Elmella Parker, and therefore they're making a claim against the county.
Well, why, why is it the county?
No, I'm sure they sent one. This is just the one we got, so this will be able to have the share of the county, uh, to deny this claim. It's kind of hard when you look at this claim, that this man killed two people or three people.
Well, what's hard is to figure out which one actually was taken.
All right, I, I do think they know that. I might discuss that post with the board, we'll talk about it in the second session.
All right, um, so we got a motion, the second on the floor, all in favor, the motion say aye. Out of opposed, the motion carries. Mr. John, you have anything?
No, sir, thank you.
How you feeling?
Not good.
Hang it up, all right. Supervisor, Larry, you have anything? Supervisor Paul, you have anything?
No.
I'm good, Supervisor Michael?
Do we want to have a, um, executive session to hear or clarify or anything with development commissions?
For work?
Yeah.
Property issues?
Yeah, and also, we probably need to discuss personnel for God, participation.
Potential lawsuit.
Okay.
Yeah, well, uh, the development commission issue involved in Bald Eagle is a matter of potential litigation, and I'd be glad to talk with that, the board about that in the second session, if y'all desire to do so. I, I will tell the board, so you know, the development commission, through their attorney, has been advised, and they're, they're working on it, and they asked for us to wait until they finish their investigation before we, did anything, say something, but the board certainly, we can talk about it, and I can let you know the status of this.
I'd like to know, I hope we're to know.
So that, that did qualify.
So that's one, and the second would be a personnel involved in participation.
Person for.
Personnel for. Potential purchase.
Okay, all right, Supervisor Paul, you have anything?
Nothing today.
Ms. Pam?
Nothing for me.
Okay. I'd like to make a, you get a motion to go to the executive session?
You got something? Did you want me to talk about the status of the twenty twenty audit?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
She moved that one.
Mr. McAdams had been in contact, um, he had an email and back and forth with the partner in charge with the audit firm, to no avail, no response, and so Mr. McAdams spoke with a different partner, and I contacted him last week. He is working on the twenty twenty draft, actually, this morning, I got an email of the second draft, I'm, uh, review, reviewing today. In the contract, they were awarded twenty twenty and twenty-one audit, they have informed me verbally, they're not able to do the twenty-one audit. I think we should definitely get something in writing, but some of the issues that I'm concerned with is, we're very late with the twenty twenty audit, so it's, it's affecting our credit rating. So we go to issue bonds, that can be a costly issue, so we're trying to resolve that by the end of this month. But it's timely, it has to go to the state for review, and the state kicks it back. The concern with the twenty-one audit is, you know, what firm will be able to come in and do just that one year?
Well, we got, we got a twenty-one and twenty-two.
Well, the problem with that is, the state auditor's office, because it's a three-party contract, they put out a list every two years of the counties they're going to audit, they have not put out the list of who they're going to audit for twenty-two. I highly doubt that they will pick Harrison County because we are such a large audit, um, but my suggestion is, you know, let's reach out to the state, see if they can give us something in writing, or give us any guidance if we can contract for twenty-one and twenty-two.
Well, I'm asking our attorney that question, as to legal.
Why would we not build a contract for twenty-one and twenty-two?
Because the state auditor's office puts out lists.
List of approved auditors.
Well, they put out a list of approved auditors, but they also put out a list of counties that they themselves are going to audit.
Okay.
So they could say that they're going to audit Harrison County in twenty-two, I doubt it, but I don't know that.
But considering the problem we got, Jennifer, why wouldn't the state just tell us to go ahead and do it, understanding that we've got a problem, and we're going to be told, and it's going to cost us some money?
And they might as well do that.
But the question that I was asking.
And go ahead and, and have somebody to do it.
Well, that's just, that's my point, let's just do it, I mean, I'm not hearing you say they're preventing us from doing it, you're just saying that we may not need them because.
Well, the contract is.
Let us just do it anyway, or be prepared.
I don't know that we can do that, and the reason.
Well, you just said we could, huh?
Well, the contract we have is a three-party contract.
Well, then I'd ask Mr. Hallman.
We'll look at it, well, the next meeting, we'll come up with a recommendation to the board.
Yeah.
How about that, that'll, I, I, just so the board knows, when I found out about this issue last week, I sent an email directly to the auditor, to contracted auditor, and he tells me he's going to get it done, so, they had a person that was handling it left, or did it die, I don't know, had he left?
The, the audit manager left, left.
And so, this, this person, take it over, and you can imagine, have this drop to go out.
They just didn't have the personnel to really do the governmental accounting.
Got to drop it his last, and he's going to try to resolve it, I explained to him that he's had a potential issue, serious issue with it, and then, and he said he's going to get it done. So you just need to stay on top of them to make sure that.
Have we used that firm before?
Yes.
Yes, sir, they've done the past, I think, three years.
Like there's a common theme.
And I, I think the person that's been doing it left somehow, too, too big, and then therefore, trying to take over, take over audit, it's a nightmare. And so, I assume that's what happened. They're not bad people, they just got caught.
Mr. President. May I?
Yes.
It's my understanding with the low bid that they have, Phil Williams, the, so it's a twenty twenty-one audit, the board can seek with Alexander Van Loon, and ask them to do the audit at that cost, you don't have to rebuild or horn, or horn.
I will, I will say this in error.
You don't have to rebid if you do that.
Well, given the light of the influx of COVID and CARES money that came in for twenty-one, I suspect that the county is going to pay more for their audit in addition to the governmental accounting standards board, has new lease pronouncement, uh, it's going to require a little bit more work for the twenty-one.
I understand that kind of the board, because that wasn't in the original proposal, and amend the fact that you did get that additional money and the board could pay for the additional services on top of the low bid. My understanding, you don't have to go through all of it, uh, and get the state.
They were the second.
I think Van Loon was also.
I, I have to go back and pull the proposal, I'm not sure if they even did this last round.
Well, let's look at it and see.
We'll look at it.
Well, they will know.
And then the board, and through Jennifer, could reach out to the state auditor's office, and let, I'm sure they'll agree with it for twenty twenty-one, so.
I think that's a good idea.
They'll do it, I, I've heard they will do it.
All right, thanks, Jim. Now, we can get a motion to go to the second session.
Motion, second.
All in favor of that motion, who the matters are, the personnel department involved in purchasing and the potential litigation involved in Harrison County Development Commission, Bald Eagle Development. All in, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Out of opposed, motion carries, thank you. We got, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Out of opposed, the motion carries, tell me.
And of course, the second session, the board discussed the manner of potential litigation, that personnel matter done actually was taken.
Connie's out, but, or thank you, sir.
Thank yous, but with that, three times, right?
Yeah.
So.
You voted yes to come out in the executive session.
Yes.
Yes.
And, and she's gone.
This hand sanitizer stinks.
So we get most of the joint?
That's for the record.
Second.
All in favor, the motion say aye. Motion carries.